Test, test. Test. It is 5 o'clock PM. I'm calling the Ross Township Special Board Meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, you may proceed with the roll call.
Trustee Beeks.
Here.
Trustee Harman.
Here.
Trustee Langshaw.
Here.
Trustee White. Supervisor Hutchings.
Here.
Trustee, I mean, Treasurer Weirzma.
Here.
And Clerk Stages, here. Rob Tholl is present.
Thank you. Correct. I would be seeking a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
We have a motion in support to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. I'd be speaking, I'd be seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. It is...
One comment on the consent agenda. Amanda came to me earlier this afternoon with some other changes, which were done, and those are in the packet that will be put in the binder in the vault. So, those changes were made. They were just some, where it said motion, I accidentally had resolution or resolution, I had motion, so we fixed those.
So, do we need to distribute those? So, the board, the board needs to see it to approve it. So, why don't you pass those out real quick?
I have one copy.
Okay. Okay. So, can you point out so I can mark it up?
No, they're...
They're already run. Oh.
Yep. So, there's...
Okay. Very good. Pass it along. Thank you for bringing that forward. So, everybody can get rid of what I stapled to your agenda. All right. We're ready?
Accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion with, with support to accept the consent agenda as newly presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. I will turn the consideration of settlement agreement in lawsuit over to Attorney Tholl.
Oh, oh, we're in open session right now, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, this is fine to discuss in open session. So, this involves a lawsuit between Chris Tracy and the Tracy's and the Chipmunks. Case number 2025-0502CZ. And in this case, the township was brought into the suit between the parties. In addition to the Tracy, in addition to the Chipmunks, McBane Law, Law and Service, Wayne McBane, Glass Associates, AGS, and Ross Township were also defendants. And it involved a DEC dispute between neighbors. And they reached, we really don't have a lot to say about it, other than they reached a agreement between the parties to dismiss the lawsuit upon the payment of $5,000 by the Chipmunks to the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy. So, if they make that payment, the lawsuit is dismissed, and we're out of that, you know, we're done with the litigation. So, from our standpoint, there's not a lot to say about it. You know, if it's going to be dismissed, that's great. And we'd be, just be looking for a motion, or let's do a resolution to accept the settlement agreement. And then we can have the supervisor sign off on it.
I, I resolve we accept the agreement.
I, I do have a question before we go to vote. I didn't, when I looked at the agreement, I didn't see anything at all that suggested confidentiality?
No. And I, and frankly, I don't think settlement agreements, sometimes people play games with those and try to make them confidential, but with a government entity, it should be a public document.
Because to me, I mean, we've lived this for a year. You know, we went through the ZBA several times. And to me, it, it just looks like, you know, they're settling for somebody to give a charitable donation for 5,000. They had us all in our, you know, tied up with lawyer fees, et cetera. They had AGS with their lawyers, and then it looks like, you know, again, we see what the settlement is. So, my question is, if we asked for an accounting of how much did this lawsuit cost us? I think it's important that we kind of share that with our constituents, because I'm assuming it's thousands. And, and...
The deductible was 5,000.
Pardon me?
On the, on the insurance. So, we, so we paid...
Probably weren't hurt.
I said the deductible was 5,000.
And we paid the five, right? So, we know it was at least five. And then, of course, we have a lot of time and effort that was not charged, you know, per se, right? I mean, I know Rob was charged, but everything that we all did wasn't. So, I don't know. I just, I just look at it in terms of transparency. I mean, we have a couple of neighbor, you know, we have a neighbor that, yep, they had a problem with how something was done. They didn't like the, the ZBA, so they decided to sue everybody, and now they settle for a $5,000 check.
Should've made the charitable donation to the township.
Yeah. So, I just, I just state that, if anyone is interested in pursuing that, I'd, I'd love to make a motion for that. If there is no interest in pursuing that, no problem.
What, what are you pursuing? You, you want us to, to present the cost of the whole...
Yeah, I think so. Because, again, it's a, and I know I'm on tape, but I'll call it frivolous. Okay? And, and it cost us five grand. And if we can share that and share all the names, people might think twice before they go, hey, I'm going to bring a lawsuit forward, and I'm just going to name everybody and their cousin. You know, I'm saying we're a cousin, but...
Do we need, do we need a motion to have that be put together?
Because we, because we don't want to spend a lot of money trying to get to the total line, so we know, we know it costs us $5,000.
It's probably the bulk of it. I mean, it was insurance defense, so, I mean...
Okay. Well, I just thought, I don't really want to spend...
Minimal. I mean, I wasn't part of any of these settlement talks.
Yeah.
No, but, you know, so obviously, it's going to be, it's on the recording that, you know, this, this lawsuit, which ended up getting settled, cost, which means every member of the township resident paid whatever piece of $5,000.
But add in this special meeting, too, because we have four trustees at 115, and that's not covered under the insurance, right? So, I, I'd be comfortable adding that in there, too, so... But, again, how we put that out, if we just put on the website, hey, for your information, you know, the Tracy's sued the Chipmunks, or whatever, and...
As much as I agree with you, I'm, I'm not sure it would be appropriate to put it on the website, but I think it's going to be in the, the minutes, and, and I think it'd be appropriate, you could put the, you know, this, this lawsuit cost the township, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, $6,000.
So, I think what we're looking at is someone needs to make a motion to direct the clerk to put a financial dollar amount on the lawsuit, and if there's an interest in that, it would require a second, and then we can talk about what that looks like for minutes.
Because the clerk owns the minutes, I don't know if we can, can we make a motion to director to put it in there, or is it just...
No, you can. I mean, they're, they're preparing it, but if you make a motion, that has to be put into the minutes.
They have one motion to accept, and I just wanted to talk about that, so...
So, the motion is to accept, we need a second, which actually triggered this discussion. You are then adding a...
Amendment.
Well, I don't know if you were abending that.
I was asking if everybody feels...
Let's vote on that.
Okay with that. I'll, I'll make the motion and see if, like you said, see if it seconded it.
Okay. So, on accepting the settlement, all in favor? Oh, it's roll call, sorry. I apologize, clerk.
A resolution for accepting the settlement is a roll call vote. Trustee Harmon.
Aye.
Treasurer Weirzma.
Aye.
Clerk Stages.
Aye.
Supervisor Hutchings.
Aye.
Trustee Langshaw. Trustee Beeks.
Aye.
Trustee White.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
All right. Now, let's make a motion that the minutes cover the, the actual court case, the plaintiff, the defendant, and our settlement, and an approximate cost of what it cost the township to do this, which would be somewhere between 5,500 and 6, whatever you, we would, guys would want to come up with.
Okay. So, you, you're saying you want this in the minutes, which it would have been anyways, it would have been part of our packet.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's going to be, you're going to, you're going to write out that the, the motion is to include in the minutes, the, the kind of the breakdown, so that's going to be summarized in the motion, plaintiff, defendant, the, the cost.
And the settlement.
Yeah, and the settlement, what the settlement was and the cost. You could probably just bullet point it. Of course, the settlement will be attached, and that way, anybody reading it, they don't have to read through the settlement, they can just see these parties.
I'll support.
Amanda supported it.
Amanda supported it.
Oh, all right. Excuse me.
So, that is a motion. All, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. So, we are now moving into our closed session to discuss material exempt from, or due to attorney-client privilege. Does somebody have the... I will go right here. I got it. I move that the Ross Township Board convene in closed session under Section 8, 1H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from disclosure by state statute, Section 13, 1G of the Freedom of Information Act, being a letter from its attorney dated November 12, 2025, for the reason that the letter is exempt from disclosure under state law due to the attorney-client privilege.
I'll support.
We have a motion in support to convene into closed session, and there are in pieces of information in your packet that you will need to grab and take with you. Is this a roll call, though? I believe it is.
Trustee White.
Aye.
Trustee Beeks.
Aye.
Trustee Langshaw. Supervisor Hutchings.
Aye.
Clerk Stages.
Aye.
Treasurer Weirzma.
Aye.
Trustee Harmon.
Aye.
So, there's nobody here, but because we can't record when we're in closed session, we are going to adjourn to our private space. We will keep this live, so when individuals come in, they know that we've not stopped recording. We'll all reconvene in the office.
Huh?
My house key safe in the bike. Probably okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's gonna come up here. We'll, we'll run out there and beat them up.
Somebody's gonna steal license from the police station, right?
No, not at this hour. Oh, Lord.
It's pretty cold out there.
Ah, it's getting there. Wouldn't be so bad if the wind wasn't blowing.
My God, I know. I had to fight for my life the entire time.
Did you have to play Dodge 'em Deers?
Not this time.
I had one standing just, just off the road as I came up to 89, just standing there, up out of the ravine, looking around, it's like, "You dumbass, get out of the way, somebody's gonna hit you."
Last week, they were all over. I went to work a couple of times.
Oh, boy, how far do you have to?
Uh, it was fifteen miles there.
Okay.
And, um, about in, in the old GM stamping plant in Midlake facility up there on Sprinkle.
Okay.
You had ninety-six into Galesburg, and then you could take that, which, that part's a little rough, but you get to KRVT from Galesburg to, uh, Comstock, so it's not bad.
Not, not too bad.
They were all over, and then I was out afterward a couple nights last week, things were everywhere, everywhere. But I haven't seen a single, single one this week yet.
Oh, wow, knock on wood.
Last year, I take that back, I guess it would've been January of this year, I was riding out at the fort and I hit one.
Oh, no way.
Yeah. Stupid thing, I mean, it was pitch black and my headlight had just died, so I-
So I was riding in the dark, coming down the hill. Um, you ever go out there, you know, like where the mountain bike trailhead is? So I was coming down that hill and he was standing right at the base of it. Never saw him. So I think he was perpendicular to me. Ju- I think bike kinda, bike kinda went under him and I just went straight off the back. Just hit the ground like a sack of potatoes.
Damn.
I've hit more animals on my bicycles than I really care to admit to be honest.
Yeah.
Hit a Canadian goose last year.
Oh.
I think sent me about thirty feet over the handlebars.
Oh, I would bet that hurt like a motherfucker.
It did not feel good.
Hi.
Hi. I work with Rob Fall.
Okay, are you?
I'm Erin.
Erin, come on in. They're still in their other meeting.
Okay.
In the back. I'm Valerie.
Hi Valerie.
She spoke to me. Nice to meet you in person.
Nice to see you.
Amy, nice to meet you.
Hi Amy. I have another meeting I have to do at six and then I have to pop right back in.
Okay.
It'll only take me about fifteen minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda. It looks like we're gonna take care of all our good old business, new business before we go to closed session. So that should work out just right with what you need to do. Cool. What was I gonna say to you? You were talking about hitting a goose. Oh, my grandson was home for thirty days from the military. Last, like, three days before he was ready to deploy back out, cause he's gotta go back. In fact, he's there now. He had to go back to, um, North Carolina to finish fourteen weeks of infantry training. So he left out Tuesday morning at like five-thirty in the morning. Holy shit. He called me about nine-thirty. He said, yeah, I'm walking through the airport. I'm going to find some food. I said, oh, okay. I said, where are you? He says, I'm in Atlanta. I was like, holy shit. But he was on his way home. He'd gone to see his brother who lives further out, one-thirty-one, beyond Schoolcraft. And just got up to U Avenue and a deer ran into the, to the passenger front quarter, totaled the car. I was like, oh, honey, I'm so sorry. But are you okay? Yeah, I'm okay, but the car is not okay. I said, well, we'll get it totaled out. We'll put the money in the account. It'll be here when you get back. And what else are you gonna do, you know?
Yeah, you don't have a whole lot of options, especially when it's not like you can put that on pause like, ah, sorry, guys, I gotta deal with this.
Yeah, I can't, I can't come back yet. They'd go, yeah, right. I don't think that's how it quite works. No, very true, my friend, very true.
They will, the goose, they'll knock the crap out of you.
Wow.
The second helmet that I cracked, you have to shred that helmet.
Oh, I bet. My sister got hit, um, she was, she lives up north, but she was coming home from somewhere and a turkey decided to fly up in front.
Know if that voice will do some damage.
Oh, hit her the front of her, um, hi there, the front of her windshield. Shattered the sucker. Hey, Jake. No, they sure don't.
How you doing?
Good, everyone?
Not too bad.
You guys know what the public pipe passer is?
I'm sorry?
Public pipe passer?
I have no idea. Sorry. Oh, maybe it is. I don't know. Oh, it's on this wall. Okay.
Thank you.
No, they're still in there. Mr. Beeks?
We're coming back into open session, only to.
Yeah, we gotta finish our board meeting too. Yep, okay.
I move we return to open meeting.
I second. We have a motion with support to return to open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries.
I move that we accept our attorney's advice in the matter discussed in closed session.
We have a motion in support to follow attorney's advice that was discussed in closed session. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries.
I'll move we adjourn.
I ch- I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you.